Thank you, Professor. I appreciate it very much. Thank you. Thank you. And I would like to thank Drake for hosting this afternoon as well. And I do appreciate everybody coming out today. And the way we would like to do this, we do have a number of staff members that will be coming around the auditorium. I think you've already filled out a number of question cards. We do have a bucket, those that have written their name and have stated they want to ask a question. We'll be calling those names a couple at a time, so if you can raise your hand, so that the staff members can get you a microphone. We'll have you come out to the aisle, state your name, give the question, and then we can have a discussion. So I do appreciate you coming out again. I really do, because this is a great demonstration of our democracy. This is my sixth public event this year, so it's good to have so many people engaging in the process. We do have a 99-county tour that we do as well, going out and visiting with folks all across the state. This is my third year of doing that, and we'd love to do more of that. Hopefully, you can engage further throughout the year, not just at the beginning of the year. So I'm looking forward to hearing some questions today, hearing your comments. I will be taking some notes. We do have staff members that will take notes as well. And if you do not get your question asked today in this public forum, then please make sure that you leave your cards with your question written out in a way that we can contact you. If you'd like us to send you a letter or give you a call, we can do that. So I appreciate it. So what we'll do, I think, we'll have Matt drawing a couple cards. He'll read the names, and if you would, make your way to the aisle. We'll get a microphone to you, and we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you.
Okay, great. The first question is from Elizabeth Yale from Ankeny, Iowa. Elizabeth Yale, Ankeny, Iowa, up there. And following Elizabeth will be Barb Covball from Des Moines. Where's Barb?
Up in the balcony.
They're both up there. Okay. We will start with Elizabeth.
Good afternoon, Senator. Thank you for holding this forum today. My question has to do with women's issues. I believe women's issues are also economic issues, and they are family issues, and ultimately, they are national issues. When women have access to quality reproductive health care, to maternity care, when families have access to parental leave, to affordable childcare, and affordable quality medical care, we see improvements across the board for children and families, and ultimately for our nation. We see improvements in child, infant, and maternal mortality rates. We see improvements in education, and we see improvements ultimately nationally in young people who are prepared to thrive and to take their place in society. The American Healthcare Act, supported by the GOP representatives in Congress and President Trump, as well as the President's budget blueprint released yesterday, eliminate funding for crucial services to women, children, and families. This is not to mention the fact that parental leave and affordable childcare are out of reach for many American families. Would you vote against the AHCA in its current form and commit to working on behalf of Iowa women, children, and families to secure everyone who needs and access to reproductive health services, maternity care, parental leave, and affordable childcare?
Well, we won't be probably voting on the AHCA in its current form, because it has not been gone through in the House. We don't know what the final product will be before it comes to the Senate. Now, there are a number of things that are laid out, and I can't, because that's not what I will be voting on. So what we are, what we will be looking at, and what I will support in the bill when it comes into the Senate, there are a number of things that I do support. And one thing that I've heard predominantly from Iowans is making sure that pre-existing conditions are covered in the AHCA. So that will be coming over. I also support keeping children on their parents' policies until the age of 27. Those are the two predominant things that I have heard from Iowans. Now, in the proposed form that it's in in the House right now, it does make sure that women, based on their gender, is not a pre-existing condition. So they cannot be charged more for being a woman. And that's the same, and that's the same as Obamacare. Also, with the new AHCA, it still covers everything that is considered an essential benefit, as it exists right now.
Barb from Des Moines is next, and following Barb will be Jan Svech from Des Moines. Jan? Great. We'll mix these up.
Thank you for coming, Senator. My question is related to the last one, but it's a bit more specific. Planned Parenthood has a proud 100-year history of providing of providing necessary healthcare, testing, and family planning services. The Iowa Senate recently voted to defund not only Planned Parenthood, but the entire Iowa family planning network. All of the research, all of the research indicates that when family planning services are less accessible, abortions increase. We all understand that no federal money and no state money goes to fund abortions. So with that in mind, will you support Planned Parenthood?
No, no, I will not. No. We know we know that the money is fungible, and, number one, Planned Parenthood is not the predominant agency that provides women's healthcare services. No, it is not. In Iowa, in Iowa, in Iowa, our federally qualified healthcare centers vastly outnumber Planned Parenthood's. So, yes, they do. So you may disagree, but the facts are elsewhere. So what I have proposed is that the federal funds go to those federally qualified healthcare centers that do not provide abortions. Planned Parenthood is, is the largest provider of abortions across the United States.
Jan, Jan has the next question. Following Jan, following Jan will be Viata Vongpa-Jun from Urbankdale, Iowa.
Senator Jan Svech from Des Moines, there is credible evidence that persons in the Trump campaign and some who may well be in the administration right now have had contact with Communist Russian intelligence. If this is true, this could seriously impact the stability of our democracy. It can also seriously impact the ability of America to protect its interests around the world. Will you call for and support an independent investigation to get to the bottom of this issue?
There, there actually are separate investigations going on right now. Both the Intel Committee in the House and the Intel Committee in the Senate are investigating this. So the problem with, the problem with outside investigations are that they are not transparent, and they don't have to, they do not have to set, they do not have to, they do not have to release a report to the public. But what they do is, through the House and the Senate, they do have to release reports of the investigation. Now, I don't support, I don't support anyone with personal dealings with the former, you know, Communist Party people. So we are, we are pushing against the administration on this, and I've asked President Trump to stand harder and firmer against Russia.
Following Viata is the next one. Viata, have you found a microphone? Following Viata will be Randall Damon from Des Moines. Randall, can you hold up your hand? Randall? Viata, please.
All right. Finally got to ask a question. This is my fifth time in one of these things. So thanks for holding this, Joni. Okay. I live in Urbankdale. I just moved here last year from New Jersey. I'm a refugee. I have lived, worked, and studied all over the U.S. When I moved here last year, I was very impressed with Iowa and the people of Iowa in general. However, the crazy coming out of, the language coming out of Steve King's mouth, and some of members of Congress, is really shocking and concerning to me. I just received my LLC certificate to start a business here in Iowa. I planned, I planned on staying here for the long term to invest my future, to invest in my business and my daughter's future here, but the craziness coming out of some of the members of Congress' mouth makes me want to run the other way, Joni. These values have no place in America, as you know. We are a land of immigrants. It has no place in the U.S. Congress. Will you please join the people of Iowa and Americans in general and ask for Steve King's long overdue resignation?
Thank you. No, thank you for your willingness to be here, and I think in Iowa, we are very welcoming. No, I, I cannot ask for that. I would not ask for that. I don't condone his language, but his voters, his voters will make that determination. His voters will make that determination. So we don't condone it. We don't condone that language. We try to speak respectfully. I would, I would say to you too, that we all need to act with a level of respect, and that goes for our elected officials.
Randall Damon from Des Moines has the next question, followed by Kathy Webster from Norwalk, Iowa. Kathy Webster, Kathy Webster. Randall Damon has the next question.
Will you at least publicly admonish Steve King?
I have already released a statement, and yes, I did.
Kathy Webster is the next, followed by Judy Zobel of West Des Moines. Judy? Judy? Judy, okay. First Kathy Webster from Norwalk.
Go ahead. We have our next question, please.
Hi, Joni. Thank you for having us and speaking to all of us. My question to you is about Planned Parenthood. If you don't believe in birth control, then how do you expect Planned Parenthood to continue? And if you're an anti, you're an anti-choice person, is what I'm gathering?
I am pro-life, and I do
And I'm, and I'm pro-life as well, and I'm pro-life as well. We are all pro-life.
I am pro-life.
But I have the right to choose, and for the government to interfere
You have the, I'm sorry.
For the, for the government to interfere with a woman's right to choose, and then they turn around and want to jump in, in other areas of our life. The inconsistency, the hypocrisy is beyond the pale.
The point would be that, the point would be, I do not believe in federal government or taxpayer dollars going to the funding of abortions. We know, we know that, we know that the money is fungible. When it goes into an organization, it can be used. However, would you, would you support, would you support over-the-counter birth, if it's okay, if I can ask you a question? If, would you support an over-the-counter birth control that you could go in and purchase at a Walgreens or anything like that? Would you support it if insurance covered that? That's good, because I actually have a bill that does that. I support birth control.
Judy Zobel, Judy Zobel's the next, has the next question, followed by Kathy Burge from Indianola. Kathy Burge, could you please stand? Kathy's up there. Judy Zobel has the next question.
Well, I'd like to thank you for being here, Senator Ernst. And gee, that last answer was good. Thank you. I, I would like to speak for the people in Iowa who are struggling financially. I think we've taken a big, we've, we've all looked at Medicaid and the future of Medicaid and been despondent, but I want to ask you about something that falls within your committee, your Agriculture Committee and Nutrition, and that is the, the future of SNAP. The word has come out that we've been hearing through the grapevine, and most of this grapevine stuff comes true. We've been hearing through the grapevine that it's going to be block granted. We only have to look at TANF in Iowa to understand what that does to a program for people who don't have a big voice. So it cannot respond quickly. It cannot keep up with the cost of living, and on and on. And the statistics are there to back that. Believe me. So So I want to know that what you're, what you're thinking about that program, in the future of that program, that will come up this summer, I believe.
The Farm Bill is open for discussion this year. It has to be renewed by 2018, and I share your concerns as well. It is important that, that we make sure those in our communities that are the most needy and need that, we have a lot of Iowans that are food insecure. So maybe shocking to some of you, but I actually am very, very concerned about that. And one of the priorities that I have in my, in my office is working on rural poverty, making sure, and this is a number of issues that are all nested together. One is, is rural development and making sure that we have an economy in the rural area that supports our families. Two is making sure that we don't have food insecure families out there. So there's a lot of partners that we have between the federal government, the state government, our local governments, and of course, all of our wonderful nonprofits, in working with the various food banks, our grocery stores, our restaurants, and making sure that, because we're such a resource-rich state, that food products are actually getting to those families that need it the most. And then also making sure that we have quality housing for people as well, because we know in a lot of our communities, we have housing that is not suitable for families. So there's a number of issues all nested together, but it all centers around rural poverty. And when you look at Iowa as a whole, we are a rural state. So our issues are very different than some of the other states that may have much more metro areas. So I will be working, watching out for SNAP and other programs like that in the Farm Bill.
Kathy Burge of Indianola has the next question, followed by Kelly Barnum of Des Moines. Kelly, can you please stand? Kelly Barnum from Des Moines. Kelly's there. Kathy has the next question.
Joni, thank you for coming to Des Moines. We really appreciate it. As we all know, climate change is real. The science says it is caused by human endeavor. The science states that it is caused by humans, and what are you personally going to do about it to help save our world, save God's beautiful earth?
I think, I think my role in this in the Senate is to make sure that we are looking at alternative energy sources, and we do that quite well in Iowa, whether it's solar, whether it's wind, whether it is our renewables through ethanol or biodiesel. I think that's where I can actually partner quite well with a number of my friends on the left. This is something we all believe in, and we can, we can support those efforts.
Kelly Barnum from Des Moines has the next question, followed by Natalie Berkowitz of Des Moines. Natalie Berkowitz, Des Moines. She's up there as well. Kelly Barnum.
Yes. My concern is the environment as well, is the last question, and that the threat of global warming is arrested. Do you believe in climate change, one? And two, what are you going to do to assure we are headed towards clean energy and species and planet survival? And that's more than what we're doing in Iowa, and that often gets shipped out of Iowa, any of the clean, the clean energy. We want real solutions, because it seems like they're just coming in for our public lands, our natural resources, and there's a bait and switch going on, as well as DAPL, and it's highly concerning to this, this state.
So again, going back, working on the renewable resources. I know that some, like with the, the wind energy, approximately 38% of what we produce for, or excuse me, our electricity in Iowa, about 38% of that comes from our wind energy. I know some of that does go to other states. We do see additional wind farms going up. I've had that discussion with the wind energy folks, and until we actually develop a battery where we can store the wind energy, we will have to export some of that. Whatever we can't use will have to be exported. We do have additional wind farms going up across Iowa. I think it's a great thing. I think it's wonderful that we can do that. We do need to encourage, and we have, we do have tax credits that are available for those. So we will continue to support those, those tax credits. I know the wind energy one will phase out in just a few years, which they have actually asked for, because they're doing quite well. So that's one way that, that we can work towards making sure that we are, are pushing the clean energy agenda.
Natalie Berkowitz has the next question, followed by Julianne Genetek of Urbankdale, Iowa. Julianne Genetek?
Sorry. Do you believe in climate change? I really like to answer.
I believe, I believe our climate has changed for thousands of years. Is that not true?
Good evening, Ms. Ernst. The reason I was waiting is I'm a teacher by profession. And I believe that everyone in this room has a right to speak and say what needs to be said. I am specifically a science teacher, and I do believe in global warming. That is not my issue this evening. My issue this evening is the dilapidated state of education in Iowa. I moved here about two years ago from California. I've taught for over 25 years. I keep up my credential in the state of California. Currently, I work as a tutor and a student advocate for students with learning disabilities in the state of Iowa. I have now met with teachers and principals and Heartland AEA in Waukees, Johnston, West Des Moines, Des Moines, and in each and every case, I keep running across these situations where people don't know how to fill out an IEP. They don't know what IDEA laws are. They don't know what the ADA is or how to implement it. If we lose more funding in education than what already doesn't exist in the state of Iowa, I don't even get time to die in this lifetime. I am absolutely appalled and disgusted at what passes for education for students with learning disabilities, most notably the issue of dyslexia. What is it that you are doing as a senator to get your constituency, the people in the state of Iowa, teachers, administrators, and everything, on the ball, so that when Tom May speaks, they jump? Instead of looking at me and wondering how crazy I am for trying to get a proper IEP written, or a correct 504 to benefit the learning of students? I'm a teacher who taught in Oakland, Compton. I was a Peace Corps volunteer in Namibia. I have the experience to tell you what hard work looks like. There is no teacher in the state of Iowa who could compare to me and look at me and tell me how hard their life is. So what is it you're going to do to turn things around?
I'm sorry. I, I'm from public education in Iowa. I had a, I had great teachers. I had great teachers. And my daughters and grandchildren all are in public education here in Iowa, and I think, I think we have wonderful teachers in Iowa. So I would, I would disagree. I think you said all teachers don't compare to you, and that's, that's an opinion. I had great teachers. We've got great special ed teachers as well. So if there is a, if there is an issue with forms that have to be filled out or, or teaching plans, that is something that we need to direct with the Iowa Department of Education. But at the national level, again, we have the Every Student Succeeds Act last year, which passed bipartisan, hugely bipartisan. Eighty-three senators voted in favor of it. It passed through the House, the Senate, and was signed into law by President Obama. So with that, that puts a lot of those decisions back at the state level. So it's returned a lot of the federal control to the state and the local level, because, again, bipartisantly, we, we knew that the no child left behind was not working, and those decisions needed to go back to the state and local levels. And again, it was supported widely bipartisan, 83 to however many folks voted against it. I don't know how many were there on that day. But again, we do need the local-level decisions made, whatever school district you're working in. You need to understand your children. I believe the teachers know what's best for their children, and those decisions should be made at that local level.
Julianne Genetek has the next question, followed by Timothy England from Berwick. Timothy England from Berwick.
Hi, my name is Julie, and I'm from Urbankdale. My question's also related to education. I have a soon-to-be nine-year-old son who has a memory processing disorder, and his education is protected under IDEA and FAP. And I was unbelievably appalled at the nomination of Betsy DeVos for U.S. Secretary of Education. Because I am also a teacher, and so I was doubly appalled by it. And I know that myself personally, I called your offices probably 200 times between the time that she had her confirmation hearing in the Senate, which was a joke, to the time that you voted yes against the wishes of what I would think is probably most of the state of Iowa. And so I would like to know what your plan is for holding her accountable for providing a great public education for all of our students of all across the United States, not just those here in Iowa, when she has not ever stepped inside, foot inside a public school until she was U.S. Secretary of Education? And I would also like to know why you voted for her when the people of Iowa said no.
Thank you for, well, thank you for being a teacher. And yes, she will be held accountable, and the decisions that she makes, if she is planning And yes, she will be held accountable, and the decisions that she makes, if she is planning on making any wide-sweeping changes, that would have to go through Congress, and we would have to, we would need to approve that. So, we will, so I will hold her accountable in that manner. We just passed, we just passed legislation this last year, as I explained, which returns a lot of the power from the federal government level down to the state and the local level. Because you know your students better than a bureaucrat sitting in the Department of Education in Washington, D.C. So, you can decide how best to teach your students. So, so we will hold her accountable. We will be watching that. Again, I am a huge believer in public education. So, I will support public education. Why did I vote for her? She, she was the nominee, and she has worked very hard for disadvantaged children all over the, yes, she has. So, she has supported, she has supported choice for parents and for those that have their children in, in public education, for charter schools, and those that choose to go to private schools.
Timothy England, Timothy England from Berwick, Iowa, has the next question. He will be followed by Piper McNew, age eight, of Des Moines. First up, Timothy England.
Hi, Joni. My name is Timothy England, up here. I spent 18 months in Vietnam. I was exposed to Agent Orange, and I am disabled as a result of my service. After my service to my country in Vietnam, I came back home to Iowa and continued to serve veterans at the VA Hospital here in Des Moines for 30 years. I am now retired. My question is, and I know this for a fact because I was there, the VA Hospital in Des Moines, and probably in other places, is about 20% understaffed. It has been that way since 1972, and that must be changed. Veterans will die if they do not get enough care. Thank you.
Thank you. Number one, thank you for your service. And number two, thank you for working in the VA, because that is really, really important. And you are absolutely correct, and we don't need to state that veterans will die because we've already seen veterans die. So, we need folks that are working in the VA, that are making those proper hiring decisions, not spending millions and millions of dollars on artwork for their lobbies. Those are dollars that should be going to supporting our veterans and providing for their care. So, I know that here, here in the Midwest, because we have a number of very good hospitals in the Midwest, we have nurses and doctors that really care and love our veterans. The problem is at the administrative level, and making sure that they are getting the personnel into the system that they need to get in, that they're identifying them. We know we have a shortage of psychologists and psychiatrists, and I have a bill that would provide funds to do that. But making sure that we have the care we needed. But we've got to start looking at what are our priorities? Artwork, probably not a priority. We have veterans that are providing artwork for free. They love to do that. So, we do have to list the priorities and make sure we're getting those slots filled with the dollars that are allocated. Thank you for your service.
Piper McNew has the next question, followed by Anna H., A-N-N-A-H. Anna H. from Des Moines.
Never before has there been, been a huge chance of me being shot and killed at school. I don't want to be shot. I want to learn. Why do you keep voting against common sense gun reform?
Very good. Well, one, one, we need to start enforcing the gun laws that we have right now, because we are not, we are seeing too many people that shouldn't be getting guns, getting guns. So, they shouldn't be getting guns. And the second part of that, the second part of that is making sure that we have access to mental health. So many of the incidents that we see that occur in schools is because there has been some sort of issue where kids aren't getting the kind of care that they need. So, we do need to make sure that there is access to mental health.
Anna H. has the next question. Anna H. will be followed by Shirley Brunk from Des Moines. Shirley Brunk, can you raise your hand? First up, Anna H.
Okay. I was looking through your Twitter feed today, and I found a tweet from October 28th, 2016. It reads, "She," she being Hillary Clinton, "jeopardize our safety by deciding laws don't apply to her, setting up her private email server and lying about how it was used." What is your reaction to the fact that Mike Pence and Donald Trump seem to have their own private email servers?
Well, one, I think with, and, and I can't, I can't speak specifically to what was on their servers, or if they had servers. But, but what with the governor, I don't think that, I don't think that Governor or, or Donald Trump had federal information, classified information on their systems. So, so if they have their own email account, they had their own email account. They probably, the governor probably had his own governor account as well, but I doubt that he had classified information on it.
Shirley Brunk from Des Moines has the next question. She is followed by Teresa Wees from Urbandale. Teresa Wees, can you raise your hand? First up, Shirley Brunk from Des Moines.
Hi, I am a retired teacher after 40 years of working with kids in a public school. And I guess as an older Iowan, as a woman, and as a person who spent my life worrying about kids, what can you tell me that will help assure that all of these laws that are being suggested, maybe they won't be passed, but they're all being suggested and talked about in Washington by Mr. Trump, President Trump, what, what can you tell me that would help me think that kids aren't going to start missing out on breakfast and lunch at school? That the older people in retirement years are going to have what they need after working hard for 40 years? And that women don't find themselves going backwards to the 50s, that we still are respected as workers? Help, help me know what you can do for us.
And I will tell you what I think. And remember, I'm one person out of 100 in the United States Senate, and I certainly will share my thoughts with my colleagues. But one, we do have a lot of children that are on free and reduced meals at school. And I think, and, and I am, but as I said earlier, you know, those are things that I will be watching for in the farm bill, because I believe that our children, our children need those supports. Okay? So, they need those supports. Number two, we want to make sure that those that have worked hard during their lifetime are protected. And the President has stated that as well. So, I know that he is not, he, no, he, he had said, okay. And then, and then third, making sure that, that women have access to birth control is important. So, over-the-counter birth control, easiest way to get birth control.
Teresa Wees, Teresa Wees has the next question. She's followed by Margaret Clea from Des Moines. Margaret Clea, can you please raise your hand? Thanks.
Good evening, Senator. Thank you for being here. I was pleased to hear about your concern about mental health, and so my question goes back to healthcare in the country. And we know there's no perfect healthcare plan. We know that premiums were rising, and access to care was a huge problem before Obamacare. I know that you, I've heard you speak about people that you're hearing from in Iowa who don't, who have been harmed by Obamacare. I think there are many people who have been very much helped by Obamacare. So, in terms of the Congressional Budget Office's report about what the impact of the proposed bill in the House is, could you tell us, at this point today, what do you think that we should be doing? Repeal and replace, or maintain the current status of the law?
Well, we can't maintain the current status of the law because we know that it is, it's failing already. What, what will happen, what will happen is that we already know there are a number of insurers that are pulling out of the exchanges. Here in Iowa, here in Iowa, here in Iowa, there are a number of counties that only have one provider through the exchange. One provider. That means no choice for anyone out there, and they are stuck paying those premiums for the, for those insurers. What will happen in, in short order is there are already insurers that have stated they're going to pull out of other exchanges in other states, leaving many of the counties with absolutely no insurers. That's in the current form. So, what will happen, we are using a process through reconciliation. We won't be able to repeal the entire bill, but what we can do is make improvements. And that's what the AHCA is supposed to do. And so, there, there will be premium supports available out there. We will have to take in consideration the CBO scores.
Margaret Clea has the next question. Margaret Clea is followed by Joe Cohen of Newton, Iowa. Joe Cohen of Newton, Iowa, can you please find a microphone? Right now, it's Margaret Clea from Des Moines.
Healthcare for all, healthcare for all, healthcare for all, healthcare for all, healthcare for all.
Okay, let's go to the next question.
Healthcare for all, healthcare for all, healthcare for all. Hi, I'm Margaret Clea. I'm a retired Navy veteran, and I have a question about the cost of pharmaceutical drugs. According to Kaiser Healthcare, 82% of Americans would like the federal government to negotiate According to the Congressional Budget Office, that if on Medicare, they could get the same rebates that are provided to Medicaid that already exist, that would be worth $1.46 billion over a 10-year period of time. So, my question is, are you willing to change the Medicare Part D law that prevents this negotiation and stand up to Big Pharma?
I'm willing to take a look at any changes we might be able to make, which would make our prescription drugs much, much cheaper, much more affordable. So, I am willing to take a look at changes that would benefit the cost.
Joe Cohen from Newton, Iowa, is next. He'll be followed by Kinsey Mazounik of Clive, Iowa. Kinsey Mazounik. First, Joe Cohen from Newton.
Hi, Joni. Joe Cohen, Newton, Iowa. Wave my arm up here. Member of the National Guard for 28 years, worked on range control with Kevin Van Veen, and worked with weapons a lot. But I always followed up for our eight-year-old's question. What are some of the things you're going to do to enforce the laws on the books so that maybe we could stop some of these school shootings? Because I know those laws are not being enforced, and what are we going to do? What are you particularly going to do to enforce that?
And, and that is up to those that are in law enforcement to make sure that they are being enforced. We have, we have the, the three branches of government, folks. Congress has written laws for gun control. States have laws for gun control. And then it is up to those, those officials to make sure that those gun control laws are being followed. So, that's what we do. We want to make sure that they are being followed.
Kinsey Mazounik.
I personally can't enforce them.
Kinsey Mazounik from Clive is next, followed by Vernon Naffier from Ankeny. Vernon Naffier from Ankeny. First, Kinsey Mazounik.
Hi, Senator. Thank you for being here. My question is about Medicaid. Iowa's one of the states that expanded Medicaid, which includes services for the poor, children, and people with disabilities. The proposal in the House, which you've said you're not going to vote on that specific proposal, I understand that, but right now it's talking about freezing or reducing Medicaid spending and shifting future costs to the states, while at the same time overwhelmingly benefiting the wealthy. In January, the Iowa Legislature passed approximately $118 million in budget cuts and announced an additional $130 million shortage recently. So, our budget is in a tenuous position, and Medicaid recipients in Iowa should not be harmed to help the rich get even richer. So, my question is, will you commit to voting against any legislation that would reduce or cap Medicaid funding that the state of Iowa would receive?
Well, we know that Medicaid here in Iowa expanded to include an additional 150,000 people. So, that will be part of my consideration. I have to look at the entire bill and make sure, but I want to make sure we are protecting those. I do have some disagreements with the benefits for the people at the top. And so, I, I will take a very careful look at that and make sure that we are protecting those that are most vulnerable in Iowa.
Vernon Naffier from Ankeny has the next question. Vernon will be followed by Kim Ewinger from New London. Kim, please find a microphone. The next question is Vernon Naffier from Ankeny, Iowa.
Thank you, Senator Ernst, for coming this afternoon and meeting with us. My wife and I live in Ankeny. I am a retired Lutheran minister. Throughout my years of ministry, I have served two Latino congregations, one on the Texas-Mexican border and one here in Des Moines. One of the most heart-wrenching experiences I have had in my ministry is to see a father or a mother torn from their home, leaving their children behind. They're detained and then deported. I'd say this is heart-wrenching. We're tearing our families apart, and these are families who have lived here for years. Our immigration system needs reforming. So, I have a two-part question for you. Would you work for a bill that would open a pathway to legal status and eventual citizenship for our immigrants? And secondly, until we do get a law and a policy passed by Congress, would you seek to, for a moratorium on detention and deportation?
Two-part, two-part question. The first one, the first one, and thank you for being a Lutheran minister. I appreciate that very much. The first part is, you said a pathway towards a legal status and then citizenship. Now, one, I believe we need to first secure our border, whatever manner, so that we know. Now, just wait, because as we reform our legal immigration process, we need to know if it's working. We won't know if it's working unless we do that. But I do support, I would support a legal status. But I do not support, for those that were here illegally, I don't support citizenship. I do support a legal status. It would provide a pathway for their children. It would provide a pathway for their children and their grandchildren. But we would allow them to, to come out and be part of our communities without possible deportation.
The next question is Kim Ewinger. She will be followed by Sarah Bramell from Altoona, Iowa. Sarah Bramell, please find a microphone. The next question is Kim Ewinger from New London.
Hi. I hate to disappoint you, I'm a guy, but my wife and I have lived in Iowa, are basically our entire lives, and by the way, we're not paid to be here today. Just wanted to clear that up right away. By the way, I know you spoke a little bit earlier regarding the election and the fact that both the House and the Senate are doing their investigations. But my question to you is, how, I questioned the entire truthfulness behind the entire election, and therefore, to me, everything that Trump is doing is like fruit of the poisonous- poisonous tree. Because he, in my mind, and I would welcome someone to be able to convince me, but in my mind, he doesn't belong as president. Now, I know he's president, okay? And I, I don't have the smarts or the legal, legal ease to figure out how to correct that. But everything, and apparently nobody else does either, okay? But nonetheless, we, as we try to move forward, it's like we're all supposed to just accept this new presidency and these new radical changes, when, and it's very hard to swallow, when you just can't respect the fact that he is president. And I have a solution, okay? Now, this may not solve all the problems, and it certainly is not going to change the way Trump thinks, but if Trump wants some of us to quit being angry, and if he wants some of us to quit protesting, all he has to do is to show his taxes for not just himself, not just himself. Thank you, everybody. Let's hear that some more. Not just himself, but his entire company, all of his companies, because the Russians are involved in the last election. That cannot be denied by any logically-thinking person. I'm not smart enough to know if Mr. Trump personally was involved. I'm not smart enough to make that claim. But obviously, people in his group have been, okay? Flynn, you know, some people think, oh my gosh, he's just a conspiracy theorist. Well, Flynn, and everything that came out about Flynn, just sort of proves my worst fears. So, how can me and many of the other people here possibly accept all of these things moving forward, when it's harder than heck to even accept the fact that Trump is our president?
There's, there's a lot going on there, but I will tell you, I agree that I think he should release his taxes. There, there is precedence, there's precedence out there. All of our presidents have done it before. We would ask that, that he do the same. So, he should, he should. So, he should. All I can do is ask that he, that he release his taxes. So, certainly, we will do that. We can do that. So, so he should release his taxes. You know, I just want to reassure everybody though, because there's a lot going on out there, going back to the Russians, which I, I also agree that Russia has no, shouldn't have no involvement in our elections process, but I do want to reassure everybody that we have wonderful elections professionals here in Iowa, and the elections were not hacked, but there could have been influence out there.
Sarah Bramell from Altoona, Iowa is the next question. Sarah Bramell, she is followed by Justin Young from Polk City, Iowa. Justin Young from Polk City, please find a microphone. The next question is Sarah Bramell.
Hi, my name is Sarah Bramell, and I'm from Altoona, Iowa. I'm a Christian woman that believes in religious freedom for our country, so I would like to ask permission to yield the floor to my Muslim friend, Ahmed.
Senator Ernst, my name is Ahmed Choudhury. I'm a Muslim-American. And with all the executive orders, recent executive orders, and the recent surge of hate crimes against Muslims in this country, in my country, what would you do so that we Muslims feel safe and secure and belong in our own country?
I think it goes, it goes with every religious group out there, whether you're Christian, Muslim, Jewish, it should not matter. We should have respect for each other. So, so there does have to be a better understanding of, of our various religions, and I spent some time with an imam at the Mother Mosque last month in Cedar Rapids, just to learn more about what was going on in the community and how to better understand and be a better facilitator. So, we do have a wonderful state partnership as well through the National Guard with Kosovo. Kosovo is largely a Muslim country. We have wonderful partners from the Middle East that have worked with many of us that served in the National Guard and those on active duty. So, it is a better understanding, and we can be facilitators. It doesn't matter what your religious affiliation, you should be respected.
Justin Young from Polk City has the next question. He will be followed by our final question, Liz Webster of Norwalk. Liz Webster of Norwalk will have a final question.
Hi, thanks for coming, Senator. I'm sure this is the most fun thing you could be doing today on a spring day, so. My question is related to defense spending and the proposed budget that's come forward. I actually watched your town hall that you also had in Cedar Rapids today and received many questions about that. You stated there that only about half of our naval aircraft would be able to fly combat missions right now, and only three out of 58, like large army, I'm probably not using the right terminology, but three out of 58 large army units would be able to serve in combat right now due to outdated equipment, needing new materials. As a taxpayer, I guess I hear those stats, and I feel that there has to be some wasteful spending going on, given our incredibly large defense budget. And I have a cousin in the military who's just getting ready to go to South Korea, and I hope the best for him, and I hope he has the equipment he needs to stay safe. But I look at cuts to things like PBS that affect my family every day, and I have trouble understanding why the president, and it sounded like you agreed with our, our military needing an increased budget, I have trouble understanding why that is. I would like to ask you specifically, what would be an area of waste that you think you could identify in the defense budget to make sure that this increased money is going to protect our troops and not being wasted on programs like the F-35 that the president has identified as being wasteful?
That is a great question. That is a great question, because we know that there is waste, not just in, in other departments in the federal government, but also within the DOD. And I will give you a great example of that right now. We have an aircraft carrier that is on the, the Atlantic coast, it's being developed, it's the Ford-class aircraft carrier. It is almost a decade over the time it was supposed to be completed, and it is billions of dollars in cost overruns. And what we have done, I actually had a bill that was signed by President Obama this last year, again bipartisan support to get this through, passed through the House and the Senate, signed by the president. It's called the Program Management and Accountability Act, which should save, which, yes, it does. It actually started in the DOD, it was aimed at the DOD. We decided, you know what, we should do it federal government-wide, and it would save us billions of dollars every year, because now we will have professionals that are running those programs, that understand everything about subcontracting, and how to make sure a program stays on time and does not have those cost overruns, right? Now, we have people just willy-nilly deciding that, oh, this is the latest gadget, I think I need this in my aircraft carrier, but it never gets out of port for years and years. And then, oh my gosh, now that new widget is outdated, I haven't even used it, but I want a newer one. That's got to stop. It's got to stop. So, that's what we're doing across the federal government. Thank you. It's a really good question. So, we all can be accountable. We absolutely all can be accountable when it comes to our federal budget. So, one, one thing that is required of the federal government, the reason we have a federal government is for national defense. That's why I feel so strongly about it. But there are areas that we can save within the DOD. Now, let's, let's go ahead. I'll do two more questions, and then, and then we'll close. So, yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Liz Webster from Norwalk has the next question, and the final, final question. We'll go to Molly Hamilton from West Des Moines. Molly Hamilton from West Des Moines. The first is Liz Webster from Norwalk.
Hi, Joni, thanks for coming. My first, kind of a two-part question. Trump kept saying that Mexico is going to pay for that wall, which obviously we know they're not going to, and our tax dollars are going to have to pay for that wall. I don't, I know, I did not vote for the man, and I do not want my tax dollars going for a wall that I don't think is necessary. And secondly, would you propose a constitutional amendment that anyone that is running for the office of president and vice president, that it's required that they, they are, release their taxes, and then we wouldn't have this problem?
I don't know that that would be a constitutional amendment, but it is something that we could look at as far as code. And the next one? They must release their taxes? Yeah.
That was Liz Webster. Molly Hamilton of West Des Moines. Molly Hamilton is right.
Oh, the wall? Is that what you're saying, the wall? Oh, that was actually authorized a number of years ago, it just hasn't been appropriated
Michael is making his way to Molly Hamilton from West Des Moines. Molly Hamilton will be the last question.
Hi, thank you for being here. I recently moved back to, here to Iowa after being born and raised here. I lived for 12 years in Chicago, and I worked as a social worker as, in an inner-city hospital. And I worked with a trauma service, so we had a lot of gun violence issues, obviously, in Chicago. But my question is, going back to the individual mandate with the healthcare bill, we saw people every day that didn't have insurance, and we were in an emergency room, and you can't turn anyone away. So, there is an individual mandate in this country. And we need to stop passing that individual mandate and the MTALA requirements off to hospitals and state, states through their Medicaid programs. So, we have an individual mandate, how are we going to pay for that?
That's, that's a great point, and it was brought up, similar question in the past forum that we had in Cedar Rapids, and that is something that is not currently included in what is proposed now. You know, there's different phases that will happen out there, but if you have ideas and suggestions on that, that is something that I would like to hear more about. So, thank you. Thank you. Okay, and I, I think we'll go ahead and wrap up. I do want to thank you for coming out today. I did have members of staff that were taking notes, and so, you know, things, things that we might be able to work together on, we certainly want to do that. So, thank you again for coming out today.